Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, June 4, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Call the roll, please.
Swain?
Here.
Asher?
Here.
Here. I'd like to ask those with us to join in honoring our flag.
In pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was wondering if you were like, well, trying to get a better angle or take me out? I don't know.
And just before we get started, because I think it's very important, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to join us on Memorial Day to honor our veterans. Commissioner Harris was there and gave us, as part of his speech, a little history on Memorial Day. And I thought it was very poignant to give us that history and the reasoning behind why we have it and that it's there for us to honor our veterans and show them that we care about them and we appreciate the sacrifices that they gave through their service and some the ultimate sacrifice. And just want everyone to know that we appreciate the board. It's very appreciative for everyone who participated. Thank you.
Agreed. And see, that's in bold caps at the bottom of my notes, so.
Oh, I jumped right on it. Okay.
I echo your sentiments. Thank you.
I will move to approve the minutes for the May 21st, 2024 regular trustee meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the May 31st, 2024 special trustee meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Chief is obviously on a mission here this evening because he's pretty spiffed up. We're gonna let him go first.
Thank you. I've got one item real quick, request to approve training for Patrolman Stepka to attend the semi-annual TASER instructor recertification through Axon Enterprises to be held June 7th, 2024 at the Montville Police Department at a total cost of $495. Dave is our TASER instructor. He does all of our annual recertifications. And then every two years, we have to have him recertified. So that's the purpose of the training.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Need anything on this? Okay, very good. Anything for the chief? Chief, you are free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody? All right. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Talk to you tomorrow about the Saturday.
Martha?
Hey, we got a resolution in front of you for an amended certificate in order to spend the entire amount of the ARCA funds that are currently in the town.
Will this be 01?
Yeah, it'll be 01. So I explained to Jack earlier that at the end of last year, the amount that was in the ARCA funds is what gets carried over. That's what the county budget commission authorizes us to spend for appropriations. But in the meanwhile, the last six months, we've got interest revenue on it. So what we need the amended certificate for is to add approximately, I don't know, $10,000, $17,000 in interest revenue to that amount in order for us to expend all the actual dollars we have in there. It's going to take probably two and a half, three weeks for the budget commission to send us back the amended certificates. You guys will not be able to make contract with a contractor for Bethany Lane until I get that and until you guys approve new appropriations. That can all be done at the same time, I explained to Jack, but it won't be in time for the next meeting. So that's what this is for.
Okay, so we have the bid opening on Friday, correct, for Bethany, and we just won't?
Once we get that piece of it, we'll do a special meeting.
I mean, you can do, you can spend the $389 or whatever it was at the end of 2023, but you're still going to have $17,000 in there. So you guys will just wait and be able to spend the entire amount and wipe it down to zero.
Sure. Just I wanted to make sure I am aware of, for my information, that all we're doing is opening the bids on Friday.
Correct.
We're not voting on anything.
No, we'll determine the lowest and best bid and forward that information to the prosecutor's office for review.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
You're, you're, well, yeah, I, yeah.
We won't vote on it. We'll make sure that everything is in order for us to be able to vote on it.
Okay, like you did the other time.
Correct.
All right.
And I'm moved to adopt resolution number 060424-01 to submit a request to amend the Hinkley Township Certificate of Estimated Resources to the Mendana County Auditor for the purpose of appropriating the entire amount of Fund 2273, Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which includes interest revenue to date. Upon receipt of the amended certificate of estimated resources, the revenue and appropriation budgets will be amended to reflect the amendment.
Second.
Second. Engelmann, call the roll, please.
Swain?
Yes.
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 And then, so the other item is, I have a few extra if anybody wants one. I forwarded the trustees the proposed budget for 2025. And as I explained back in 2024, it is the best guess, it's the best guess of what revenue will be next year, it's the best guess of what'll be fed next year. And really, the sole purpose is to establish our first amended certificate, which comes in September of 2024, in order to approve our temporary appropriations to bring us into about the first month of 2025. It is truly just a best guess. So the worksheet you have in front of you, it reflects what our estimated balance at the end of this year may be. It looks at what you appropriated this year as your 2024 appropriations, your estimated unencumbered balance at the end of, or at the beginning of 2025. And then it gives what the estimated resources available for 2025 will be. A couple notes on the back, though. The, something a little different is because of the search for the full-time zoning inspector that will likely impact the amount of contracted service money that we'll be able to put into the general fund that we've been currently using for road maintenance. That, you know, remains to be seen as pending interest rates staying because right now the interest rates are high. That monthly interest for Star Ohio is about $11,000 a month. And so that is helping to defray some salary costs. I don't know how long that's going to last or where we're going to go with that, but it's helping us right now. So when you hire someone and when it's determined what their salary will be and benefits, et cetera, then we could figure that out a little further. 2011 is, has to be used for roadways. 2021 is gas tax, again, has to be done because it's used for roadwork. A bright spot is, well, I don't know, a bright spot, I shouldn't have put it that way. Subetary revenue is up. So I didn't mean to say it that way.
They're dying to get in.
They're just planning ahead.
A lot of people have lived in by their class against plan. So that's a bright spot.
It is.
Yeah. That is, that is higher than expectations. A zoning revenue is on track with what was estimated. Police, you know, police, we talk about the same thing again. They're, they're spending roughly $300,000 more every year than comes in. But because of the four levies, because of the amount that was carried over back in the 90s and 2000s, 2010s, they're fine. I still do recommend that at some point the trustees discuss relaxing one or two of the oldest levies that are not bringing in as much revenue, a two mil levy, and then putting a new levy on a five-year, not a permanent levy, but a five-year. And that will capture the new growth in the township, whereas really, three of the levies, three of the two mil levies are from the 90s, and they are not capturing the growth of the township. So it's, again, we've talked about that, I think, every year. And that's something to seriously discuss further. Fire is fine. Don't see any issues with the equipment needs moving forward thanks to the support of the community, as well as the full-time projections on salaries on that. 2022, 21. That is the drug law enforcement. I had a conversation with Chief Center about using that money earlier. Has to be used for drug outreach. Permissive, permissive will probably be using more permissive for roadwork if our general fund revenue is in demand. We may have a contraband car for the police department that will go into 2261. 2273 is the ARCA funds, and that'll disappear. And then there's one more fund on here, which is the special revenue, 2901. I spoke with Chief Center about that also. That's the opioid collection, the class action suits because of a pharmaceutical company. And that really, that has to go for drug awareness, too. And it kind of gets into an amount where the trustee should probably discuss using that. I think a lot of other communities have directly given donations to institutions that, that has been in that throughout the county. My personal opinion is that's a better use for it for people that know what they're doing than for it to be frittered away here.
So if I'm understanding correctly, that's, that's drug education is from 2221 as well as 2901?
Yeah, there's a portion of money that the police department gets every month from the county auditor. It's usually not much. It's like $50. But that, that 2221 has to be used for drug enforcement.
Okay.
It's labeled drug money. The other, the 2901 is from the opioid class action suits.
Okay.
And that also has to be used for drug.
Two different sources of money, but, okay.
But the 2901 doesn't have to be used specifically for education. Where's the?
It, it, it has to be used for drug outreach.
For outreach, right.
Okay. Who pays for, I mean, like, the Narcan that, that the police have?
Oh, that's one of their operating supplies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And again, I guess that's my point. We shouldn't be taking this special revenue 2901 money and be using it for
Things like that?
Yeah. I mean, there are a lot of, you know, nonprofits that really do a great job. And that's what a lot of other communities have been doing with their opioid monies.
Okay.
It, it seems like it's a very good place to put it where it would reach the most, have the most benefit, reach the most people. But I think put that on your thinking list.
Got it.
But other than that, I will, I will ask for a resolution to pass that 2025 budget and then send it on to the auditor. And then sometime in September, they'll send us our first.
Do you want that for this evening? For this evening?
No, no, it's too early. I just, probably the next meeting.
And then speaking of the opioid, Martha forwarded me a notice. There is another suit starting and involving another entity. So if there's no objection, I'll reach out to the prosecutor's office to see what the information is on that, and we'll pursue that as well.
Okay.
All right, I will move to pay the bills in the amount of $148,878.99.
Second.
Second, Engelmann. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fire.
All right. First thing I have is a request appropriations of in the amount of $5,847.25. It's for deck gun, portable monitor, and tips from Johnson's Fire Equipment Company. This is all equipment to put on the new tanker that we took delivery of last month. The deck gun is a vehicle-mounted nozzle, per se, that blows a large volume of water. Portable monitor is one that we can attach to a hose and move around on the fire ground. Also provides a large amount of water, and the tips go with it, or different, different sized tips to get a different volume of water.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next thing is a request appropriations not to exceed $1,500 for gas meter calibration kit from Fire Safety Services. We have a, we have three gas meters at the station that we use for natural gas calls, carbon monoxide. Some are two gas, some are four gas, and can detect different, different gases in the atmosphere. This is for us to actually do the calibration in-house. Previously, we've sent the meters out to, like, Columbia Gas, and it's, it's time-consuming, along with having, have somebody go sit with the monitors. Sometimes they can't get to it instantly, so this is a kit for us to be able to do it in-house. And it would be a little more beneficial for us, especially now that we have multiple meters and not just one.
So moved. Second.
Does the calibration require certification and?
No, no, no. It, it's, so it's a kit that you can actually buy from the supplier for the monitors. I will actually be the one handling all the calibration, especially because I am a hazardous materials technician. So I, it's, it's simple, it's something as simple as just hooking up the bottle to the meter, and you run it through a calibration, just.
I'm not saying to utilize the equipment. I'm saying do the meters require certification that they're?
Yes, yes.
So who, who gives that certification?
So it's a, per the manufacturer's recommendation, it needs a calibration every three months. It's a quarterly calibration to keep it, to keep it up to date with that. There's not a, an actual, like, like stamp of approval, per se, every three months, but it's by manufacturer's recommendations on that, that you.
There's no legal requirement?
No.
Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
The next is request appropriations not to exceed $5,000 for graphics for the new tanker from Yoder Graphics. When we were in the process of building the, the tanker, getting pricing from the manufacturer, to have the decal-ing done at the manufacturer was going to be about $8,000. And even the salesman had recommended, like, hey, go, go to one of your local vendors for the decals because they end up being cheaper than what it would be at the factory for that. Yoder Graphics, we've, we've previously used for the UTV and, I believe, one of the ambulances. And they are out of Wadsworth, so they are local. They came down to the station where can take pictures of the, of the tanker and everything and send us over an email of, with pictures of, hey, this is how, this is how it's going to be set up, everything like that. Couple other manufacturers, a couple other vendors we've gone with previously. They want you to drive the tanker up to Oakwood and at a specific time. And it's, it's just more beneficial for us that it goes with the Yoder Graphics that we've dealt with previously. And they have, they know our designs of our apparatus for graphics.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do, I don't know if you saw Mike's graphics on his trucks. They're not as jazzy, but.
He's got to go to Yoder Graphics. The next thing I have is a request to move firefighter paramedic Dan McAllister from his cadet pay to merit paramedic pay of $19 per hour. He's completed his requirements within the department to move up from his cadet pay to regular, normal paramedic pay.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the last thing I had was just an update on the, with the ambulance. I know Chief Grozenbaugh had previously mentioned it in a meeting. We had put a committee together to start building a new ambulance to replace 37, which is a 2012 Ford F450. We brought in three manufacturers, PL Custom, Lifeline, Emergency Vehicles, and Braun. When the pricing we received, Lifeline, who we've dealt with previously, they came in at $330,000, but in their pricing, they also put a $25,000 contingency for a, any further price increases, because right now ambulances are being built three years out. They're given a three-year timeframe. And so they put a $25,000 contingency in that. And the county prosecutor, Brian Richter, he was, he was not a fan of them putting that contingency in. PL Custom, one week, they gave us a price of $380,000, and the week following, they gave us a price of $390,000. Within a week, and that was their, that was their price increase that came out. And then Braun Ambulance came in at $347,000 for a Ford F550 gasoline chassis, which F550 is what we're running our frontline. The difference would be is now it's going to be a gasoline engine. It's going to be a little more price efficient with maintenance costs on that. Looking at it, what we decided, the committee as a whole, we, we took a look at our old ambulances and then looked at what we needed to change with our, with our design of it. And the big thing is what we've changed over the years is now we have three people staffing around the clock. So we need to make sure we had enough compartment space on the outside for everybody to store their turnout gear. Because, you know, we're bouncing back and forth between a fire engine and an ambulance. Sometimes everybody could be on it, they could be on an ambulance call at the same time on their way back from the hospital. They could catch a fire call. So we want to make sure they have all their gear with them at all times. Other than that, everything else is going to be pretty much similar to the other ambulances, so everybody's familiar with it. Paperwork's been sent over to Brian Richter for review, and hopefully, next meeting, Chief Grozenbaugh should have, should have something for you guys. Just want to give you an update on that.
Is all state bid pricing?
So the Braun is state bid, but it's also Sourcewell. So it's, it's going to be through Sourcewell. Two of the manufacturers do state bid and Sourcewell, and Lifeline was just strictly a state bid. Talking with them, they're, they find it a little bit easier to go through their, their Sourcewell when it comes down to it. So, but they are a Sourcewell vendor.
That's it? Pretty good. Anything else for fire?
Have either of you stepped down to see the new tanker?
Very nice.
I get that.
They get.
It's big.
They get a little sparkle in their eye when you go down there to take a look at it. It's very big. Nice.
Day, day one, the chief was already washing it. He was out there with the rag, polishing the wheels. He's proud of it.
I stopped down there and he said, do you want to come in?
It's, it's, it's definitely a nice upgrade compared to what we, what we have now with our, our 1992 tanker, so.
Well, and everybody will be able to see it in August.
Couple of the other, a couple of the other area chiefs have already come down because they want to also build a tanker, and they're taking a look and, you know, getting ideas off of ours. So it's definitely a, a good truck that's going to last us quite a while, so.
Better.
It will. Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If you have nothing else here, we'll go.
Thank you.
Unless anyone has any questions.
No.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you, Sean. Have a good night.
How's everybody doing today?
Yeah.
The only thing I'm going to have, just a couple of updates. Obviously, we had our pre-bid meeting for Bethany Lane. We had six contractors come in, so that's a good outlook on things. And obviously, you know, we're going to hold the special meeting Friday for the bid, so, you know, keep your fingers crossed. Hopefully, they come in under. If not, you know, hopefully, they're all competitive, so we'll see on that. And then, did you guys also kind of get the letter all from Mark about the park down here?
Yes.
I just left you a copy there.
So.
He's been doing that a long time.
Oh, yeah. No, so that brings us to a couple of things, you know, start thinking about whether, you know, we want to look at taking care of this as the service department, you know, talking with the guys. One of the things we probably want to look at is, and I actually am a mower, so, but, um, you know, we had talked before about even, you know, we have to go out for bed this year for our mowing contract, you know, whether that's something the trustees want us to look at doing, or we want to continue to bid it out. You know, we can add that park in, however you guys would want to do it. So it's just a matter of which way you want to go.
For the public's information, what we are discussing right now is River Valley Nature Preserve down there at 303 and Route 606 River. Right now, we've had a resident taking, being the caretaker, the maintenance director of River Valley Nature Preserve, and he will be stepping down at the end of July, did I say?
June 15. It was Mark Prevish, and we should thank him for all the care he's given it through the years. He's done a great job and done it on his own accord, and it was appreciated and. Yeah, but it's a void that we'll have to fill, and that's why I asked Mike to look at the mowing options and what we might be able to do. And I, and not to throw something else in it, but I spoke with Donnie Cox as well. And he will be relocating at the end of the year. He's selling his business. And so he was inquiring about a contract extension, and, you know, I told him what we were doing right here. So he, he has a couple of people he's going to recommend his business to, so if we do decide to stay with him, he would pass that business along to them, and they would continue to do it. But in the meantime, I said, we're looking at other options to relative to how we can maintain that piece of property now, as well as the other township properties.
Then, then only gets brush hogged about once every six weeks or, I mean, this isn't a weekly maintenance.
Right.
It's a, it's a brush hog around a circle, just for context.
I'm not, I don't know. I know he keeps it, he keeps it fairly well.
My husband and I used to do it for three years before Mark graciously offered.
Oh, did you want to back in?
Well, thank you for volunteering, Martha.
No, I mean, but all I'm saying is that it's not like it needs weekly mowing or anything, so it could be added on to an existing contract at a relatively reasonable cost.
So something for us to look at.
I mean, we'll have to get something probably at some point.
Sooner rather than later, because it's going to be June 15. So, I mean, I would say if we have, if we're ready to go for the next meeting, that should be, especially if it's once every six weeks. So that it's brush hogged.
I mean, you'd have to check with Mark, but I know that it's, it's not mowed weekly.
June 15 is that our next meeting?
What week?
The 11th.
I'll tell him, cut it, I'll tell him, cut it before he leaves.
Cut it real short.
Maybe there's, maybe there's someone who just brush hogs, and you can get through the year with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Mark did a lot more, though. I mean, he really tended that well.
Yeah, he talked about the benches.
The guys are taking care of the park benches.
Painting the benches.
So. Okay, very good.
They were working on that today, since it was a nicer day. That's pretty much, it's about all I have for right now. Like, so that's just something we probably ought to think about sooner and later, so. Especially the long outlook, whether you want to. especially the long outlook, whether you wanna have us look at doing stuff or having to stay with the contractor, so otherwise, it's, however, whatever route you wanna go, it's just gonna take a little planning, that's all.
Under that. Anything else for Mike? In the field?
I think the area is.
Um, I think it's like a half mile trail down there. So.
Down and back, that's all they do.
It's a big round, it's just a round trail. So that's just what, at least that's what I was getting off from the GSI, or the GSI maps anyway, rough figures, so.
That's about it, this is one. One with, we used to do it with a walk behind with the little, what's that thing stand on?
The uh, well, there's the gravelys and the
Yeah, it was.
Scans.
Yeah, that's what we just go. You need to do something though.
It sounds like she really wants that in, I know, yeah.
It was nice, it was fun.
Glory days.
I see that glimmer in your eyes.
And, and Mark offered because he, he just was very kind, and also he bring his fishing pole with him and he
Multi-tack game.
And then bring it, and I and Dean, that's a lot.
Good. Alright, free to go, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Frank.
Zoning.
Well, there's um supposed to have been a senior apartments tenant report, but zoning inspector's not here, so I guess we will delay that to the next trustee meeting. Um, cemetery, got a couple deeds to be signed, if we can get a couple of witnesses to come on up for us. Alright.
Baptism by fire, right?
We need one more body.
Need one more.
We need somebody else.
Mr. Harson, Mr. Pearl, oh. The ladies are stepping up.
Alright.
Might as well.
Jeff Hoop's gonna lose his job.
I know.
Yeah.
Where is he? Maybe he's on vacation.
Snooze you lose.
You depend?
Oh.
Oh, you're kinda like Jeff, he brings her own.
Ready.
Okay, so where? Witness.
I didn't know you were a lefty. It's a sign of genius, isn't it?
Yes.
Oh, look at.
I am not, I'm only right, right-handed, everything else is left-handed.
Is it a sign of genius or a sign of creativity?
It's creativity in the book, genius is just.
We're crazy.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
That's it.
Now you can't leave again.
Thank you.
Should've read it before you signed it.
We're actually staying until.
I was gonna say more cemetery rep.
I don't mean.
We ain't moving no more. We're done moving.
Pre-planning is good.
You didn't move like mom and dad, you know, the whole thing.
Your mom.
Let it for cemetery.
That's it for cemeteries unless somebody wants to dig in.
Nothing under trustee, you, you can go again.
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to have a little discussion on um signatures on plat approvals, there used to be a time when those were done at a meeting, because they require trustee signatures.
Mm-hmm.
And then um somewhere along the line last year, and I don't know how, I've kind of inquired, but I really don't have a definitive answer from anyone. Uh, it was like, just go to the zoning inspector's office to sign. But signing a plat, you know, just like signing deeds, you have trustee approval um which is generally open meeting, uh so it just kinda seems to me that the plats or replats my lawyers should be signed at a meeting presented by the zoning inspector, explain maybe what the scenario is for us to sign, in case there's some discussion take place.
I, I, I agree, it would be nice to um have the zoning inspector present when we're presented with those, so that if we have questions, because so many times we do have questions, but we're all kind of in and out of the office, you know, at odd times, and you never know when someone's gonna be in the office to answer questions, so I would fully support that.
Okay, so I will let the zoning inspector know that going forward, that's, they'll be the process, so thank you for that.
Good.
Um, I also wanted to bring up a couple of things, oh, we've got um, so street lighting at the end of Rock Ridge. So originally, this came in as the old lighting, but last year, the board uh adopted a policy to have LED lighting at the end of the streets, or at the head of the streets, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what is there in front of you, I don't know if you have any questions on that. And there's a copy there for you, so you can see what the monthly cost will be. So.
And only one on this street?
At the head of the street, yeah, which is typical what we do.
Mm-hmm.
So any questions?
How does that tie into our existing, it's, so moving forward, everything new will be LED, but nothing old will be replaced.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think that might've been some confusion, right, yes.
Grandfather.
Yeah, the old, yeah, we're not replacing what's there or anything, it's just.
Was this the one that she was confused about?
Yes, I think so, because it took a while for him to respond, um, the, the guy from Ohio, Edison Rob Solant. He was like, oh, there was some discussion at the township, and you know, and I think maybe there was confusion that.
She didn't, wasn't aware it was a new street.
A new street light, and so, and there'll be a couple more coming, because there's two more subdivisions um basically on their way, so uh basically, I would ask for um to do a motion to approve this and allow me to sign it, I guess. Um, so I've got a motion to approve the Ohio Edison Street Lighting Agreement for Rock Ridge Way at Stony Hill for one four thousand lumen fifty watt LED overhead Cobra Street Light, and further authorize trustee Engelman to sign the agreement on behalf of the township.
Second.
Discussion? It, does it show on here where the light actually goes?
Well, there's a map attached.
I see that.
And.
The arrow points to the middle of the
Yeah.
Of the roadway.
And I um don't know if that was like I mean, I can go back and clarify that.
I don't think it's where it looks like it is, it looks, I, I think it's right in the middle of Stony Hill, I think, it looks like it is um to the north. I, it looks like it's right there, to the north of that street.
Up here?
Mm-hmm.
It's probably maybe it's this.
Because that, right in the middle of the road there, that little dot, that, like, that could be a monument.
Yeah, no, and actually, actually, there's another dot there, those are markers of some sort, so.
Monuments, which we now know what those are.
Oh. GPS monuments?
This, that was like one of my first meetings, David and Mike was talking about monuments, and I'm like, remember that? I'm like, there's a monument in the road, I don't understand.
Eight feet tall?
Uh, doesn't actually show, because the arrow points to the middle of Stony Hill.
Yeah, it does. Do you want a new drawing?
Well, I'm assuming that the, both these blue line, this is this the center line of the road, and then these are the others?
I think that, I, you know.
Or is the blue line the road itself? This looks like the, see, these look like the edges.
Yeah.
So the red's almost the center, those next blue is the center line.
The red's the center line, I think.
Then Rock Ridge Way is, in this map, looks the same as Stony Hill, so that's gotta be the center of the road, and that little dot right there.
This one here, you think, is that light?
I doubt, I doubt that, because you know how they mounted the front of Rock Ridge?
Cuz all the other spots are in the road.
X obviously doesn't mark the spot.
X never marks the spot.
Well, there's two, there's four X's there, so you can't use the X's. And all I'm thinking is on that corner there, where you got a circle with the dash light, the dash line, and then the solid.
And I, he.
Because you see, there's that little well, there's like a note there on some electrical connection, but there's one also on the south side. So maybe it's tying in there, I mean, if you want me.
So all this is saying is, we're agreeing to be billed for the electric usage.
Basically.
This has nothing to do with placing, placement's determined either on the site plan or by the electric company.
All good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that, I didn't realize that, so.
Alright, off the weeds a little bit.
You know what, it's a good discussion. Uh, also, so, just for information purposes, um, just a reminder, tomorrow, going to Medina County Planning Commission is the Sanctuary Court uh for preliminary site review, that's the one across from Arborcrest, and um, so one of the things there is they will be needing to do a study for ODOT regarding a turning lane that will, that's in the report as a to-do. And then next month, we will have a final uh site plan review for Prairie Vista, that is the a development off of Hundred thirtieth.
Heard a little bit about that
Yeah.
In the last week.
Yeah, there was a little bit of water.
Just discussion.
And a lot of noise.
Ah.
Oh, wait a minute, I thought you came because you just wanted to get reacquainted.
There's a lot of noise that never stops, he's got a pump running to drain that lane.
Well, wait, wait, cuz we'll get you up here when.
Yeah.
Yep.
So everyone else can hear.
When we open up for public comment, yes.
Yeah. So um and I think that is all that I have.
Trustee Afro.
Okay. I have a couple of things I was waiting on, so that's why they did not make my agenda. Um, wanted to discuss with you both, the Fourth of July Parade. So I spoke with um the principal today of Hinckley Prep, who, if you recall, wanted to co-sponsor the Fourth of July Parade with the township this year, and um, he spoke with their marketing department, kind of got a budget, and wanted to discuss some possibilities. What we had discussed is starting the parade um at the east entrance of Hinckley Prep.
Mm-hmm.
And um coming to town hall and doing um like a cookout type of thing, you know, like barbecue. Um, I had envisioned this as kids decorating their, you know, letting the kids be a part of this, and letting the kids decorate their bikes, you know, adults decorate your golf cart, your four-wheeler, your tractor, and just ride from the school over to um town hall. They, uh, the school is envisioning hot dogs and hamburgers, very similar to what we had discussed, and they wanted to split that cost between the township and the school for the food and the refreshments. They also wanted to um get a bounce house, he, they said that's kind of their signature thing, having a bounce house, and talked about the possibility, since it will be summer, doing like a slip and slide, like renting like a slip and slide. I did talk to him about um liability, especially since it is on township property. They said in the past, what they have done is have the parents sign a waiver, so having like that bounce house, the parents sign a waiver. Um, so I told him I would bring that to discuss, I mean, I think it sounds amazing, but I said I would bring it to the board for consideration. Um, they also would like to have a Kona ice truck here, and I said, you know, I've seen lots of things where Kona ice trucks come, and it's available for purchase, so if somebody wants Kona ice, they can purchase it, that's not gonna be something that um the township pays for, or the school pays for. Also, I had Chick-fil-A reach out to me, because they wanna be a part of the Fourth of July Parade, so I told them absolutely, the more the merrier, but I can see if they would also be interested in um sponsoring the event as well, and I just wanted to let you both know where I was at with all of this, and hear your thoughts, and where we're going.
So what kind of um cost is the hamburgers and hot dogs?
Um, well, that's a good question, um, because we don't know how many people to plan for, it's the first, it's the first event. Um, I can, you know, price it out at the GFS, I think that's generally where we get everything for um the shop with the cop, we, we purchased the food from.
Mm-hmm.
GFS, that's where it's been um the most affordable, so I, like, maybe a hundred hot dogs, um fifty hamburgers. Um, I can price that out for the next meeting, because we do still have the next meeting, um before that parade would happen, but I'm thinking minimal, I'm thinking that this is going to be under a hundred dollars for the township.
So the township have to cook the food? Or this is prepared?
It would be probably a dual effort, I mean, we've got the griddles, um we've got the um, the police department purchase, the police association purchased a griddle.
Mm-hmm.
I believe a year ago, maybe two years ago, and then they also have a grill, and sure, we could get other people, myself included, to donate a grill for that day to, you know, cook them a little bit faster. I actually just got a nice new Blackstone, had a great deal, so could bring that up here, and you could cook a lot more that way also.
Okay, I mean, at Chick-fil-A, we're gonna throw in some boxes of
Nuggies?
Nug, nuggets, that would be exciting.
Um, I know that I've dealt with Chick-fil-A in the past with um shop with the cop, um and donating food, and they're actually um very particular on their donations, because the food has to be either in a heated tray, or it needs to be consumed within a certain amount of time.
Mm-hmm.
Or else it doesn't taste that good, and they can't have that on their reputation, that Chick-fil-A didn't taste good. But um a lot of times for things like this, they donate other things, like they'll do apple slices, they'll donate things like that, the fries, they never donate fries, because the fries need to be consumed within fifteen minutes of coming out of the fryer, so they never donate fries. Can see if they have chips or anything like that, so I can work with them, I just wanted to know where you both were at with this, before I'm, you know, making all these grand plans.
Well, I'm the wet blanket guy, because the liability issue for, as far as a a slip and slide or a bounce house, that's uh on township property, that's, that's the issue I have, and I don't think I could I think it's too great of an issue for us.
I have, I'm, I am concerned about slip and slide, I mean, and I just find it, it would be very awkward to get the parents to sign that waiver when the kids are running around, you, you know, if it feels a controlled environment, like, you know, you come in the door, and then you sign it, and then you go through the door, but it's gonna be out and about, I mean, I think it'd be cool, there's no doubt about it, but um you know, kids sliding down a hill and there being an accident.
Who said anything about kids? I mean.
Well, adults even worse.
Okay, um, now, I, I did talk to him about liability, um, because I thought of it, and I, I suspected that that might come up during this conversation. So the other option we wanted to discuss was um if we start the parade here and end it at the school.
If he wants to absorb it, I'm okay with that, it becomes his party at that point.
I wouldn't advertise that as part of the parade event. I mean, what they wanna do is what they wanna do, you know, what they
Mm-hmm.
Want to offer.
Mm-hmm.
But.
And that can just be, you know, they're having an event on, at the same time, you know.
From the bounce house and the slip and slide.
Bounce house, I'm not so worried about, but the slip and slide is like screaming red flag to you, like, all over. But like Jack said, and we don't really have a good location here. I mean.
For a slip and slide?
Unless everybody's going down the hill.
Yeah, and you could get up to like a hundred and fifty miles an hour.
Well, yeah, and you end up with stick up your leg, right? I mean, you know, I mean, it doesn't, and and then we have a lot of white kids, I, I, I mean, I don't, I don't care if the white kids are over there, but are we gonna have like?
So everybody is comfortable with the bounce house here, but not as So everybody is comfortable with the bounce house here, but not a slip and slide or you're not comfortable with either?
I'd rather see those both over there.
You know, you could, you could, you could start the parade at, at the uh, school and have it come to town center, have the food here, you know, so they kind of got some activity here. And then whoever wants to go play can-
Put a crossing guard?
Go back and go back to school and play.
I'm not thinking they will. I think though, to your point, it's starting here and going I think that that's where they're gonna get a critical mass of people that are gonna stay.
And I would not be comfortable with everybody leaving en masse across three oh three because the road's gonna be open then at that point.
That's true.
They're going to have to close the road for the parade and, I mean, talk about liability. I'd rather go down the hill on a slip and slide than cross three oh three with-
So is there, will there gonna be fireworks on this day? There were.
What time is this for?
The parade's in the morning, Cindy.
I just thought somebody was talking about fireworks at some point.
No. No, that's the bicentennial.
Oh, bicentennial, that's what it is.
You're confusing, you're confusing all these massive events.
All these events that we're having that we haven't had before.
Maybe I'll talk to the bicentennial about the slip and slide.
No, we talked about fireworks when you said you wanted to have movie night on the Fourth of July, and we said, well, most people would be going.
Yeah, I said that was, I said, yeah, that's-
Yeah, fireworks.
It's probably a bigger firework night than outdoor movie night.
Right, yes. Okay.
Okay, so I guess I'm confused where we left off then because are, are we saying start the parade at Town Hall and end it at the school so that they can have the bounce house? And the food and everything will be at the school?
At the school. Yeah.
So we'll just flip what we had planned on, start here and then go to the school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's fine. That's good.
What time does the parade start?
Nine.
A.M.
Wow, that's early. It's like this-
We've had meetings earlier than that, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I will um, give him a call tomorrow and just let him know, um, because I did say that that was a possibility. We just thought that we've got the bigger, more open parking lot, good for congregating and um-
Yeah.
And cooking, but that's fine.
Well, they got, I mean, their parking lots, they can do it in front of the building or in the back of the building. I mean, they got-
Back is bigger, yeah.
Yeah, there's plenty of room there, so.
Works for me. Uh, the other thing, um, Jack, since you brought this up at the last meeting, that we kind of have an abundance of movie sponsors for our outdoor movie nights this summer, um, which we just had our last one this weekend, which was a lot of fun, sponsored by the police department and Police Association, Fire Association. Um, so this idea had been floated out to me, which I thought was a really good idea, and um, with one of our sponsors, since we have so many, um, what if we did an outdoor movie night in October? That's like a drive-in movie and have it coincide with the chamber for trick or treat?
Well, where are you gonna park theirs?
Well, I would, if you guys are open to this, I would go talk to Our Lady of Grace because Our Lady of Grace is a big rectangular parking lot. And you could put the screen right on where the grass is because it does rise up a little bit on a hill. So the cars could be in the parking lot. I thought it was a good idea. Someone approached me with, and I thought I would bring it up to both of you. It would be a way to, you know, because trick or treating goes till six or six-thirty. So by then it's getting dark. I mean, a movie would start at like seven-thirty. I think that would be an awesome idea that I can talk to the church about and I can talk to the chamber about and see what they think about that.
Okay, it's cool.
And then that solves a good problem to have, which is we had so many people offer to sponsor movies.
Yeah.
So.
So how do you get the sound into the car? Do you get some way to do that or?
I'm working on that.
Okay, very good.
So I know, um, like at Christmas time, when I'm driving around seeing Christmas lights, some people have, the lights are set to music. So like when you drive past their house, it says turn your radio to this station so you can hear the music. So I would assume we can do that also with. But I don't know. I'm not the tech person. I'm gonna stick my tech guy on it and see what he can do with it. But that's just to begin conversations. Um, I will talk to the church and see if they would be willing to let us use the parking lot like that. And I will talk to the chamber and see their thoughts on it.
Sounds good.
All right. Um, you both were copied on the email from Miles from Brilliant Electric with um, answering the questions that we had from the last meeting with the sign, and we also were copied on the response regarding the variance
Mm-hmm.
um, from the prosecutor. So are you both ready to discuss the sign again? Or do you need some more time to review everything?
Well, I did um, check out the different signs.
Mm-hmm.
So clearly the Highland is clear, but it's small. I mean, I, I think the sign that Granger Fire, that's a nice size. And um, you know, but they have a lower resolution.
Lower pixel, yeah.
So I think the higher pixel resolution with the larger sign, I think, you know, on the corner would be the optimal way to go. So that's, that's four by six at, what is that, ten, ten millimeters or whatever?
So you're thinking more the size of Granger's? Or were you thinking the size that he presented to us, which was a five by six?
Granger's is what, four by six?
Hmm.
I think he said.
I would have to double check.
Let me, um, let's see. See, the Granger's is four by six. Highland was three by five. And he proposed five by six for us?
He proposed um, five by six.
That would give us an extra line or two.
Mm-hmm. Well, I just, I look at it as, um, you know, we want to be able to put messages out on that, right? And Granger's is not small by any means. And I, maybe it would look different with the, you know, the um, smaller-
Pixel.
Pixel.
Mm-hmm.
But um, I just think we want to be able to put messages on it, but we need to make sure that the print is big enough also that people can see it from three oh three and Ridge. That was why I had liked his suggestion of the five by six, and it's a large area there that we're talking about. So I don't think it would make it look overcrowded. I mean, I'm fine with either one, um, just because I think it's so important to, to move forward with something like this, that if you both would like the four by six, but I just-
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I, I had in my mind that it was that the sizes he gave us, the four by six was, that's what he proposed. Um, not kind of, not measuring out what the front out here looks in terms of what it's width.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it clearly needs to be the larger one, so I don't know. Um, I mean, there's a big difference in the foot and what it adds
Mm-hmm.
um, as far as number lines. But it is um, true that regardless of whatever size we pick, there is um, an exception, an exemption in our zoning code that as long as the sign is used for township governmental purposes, that there's no um, permitting process required for it. It's an exemption. So um, it would be used specifically for meeting announcements and things, events, township, township um, sponsors or whatever. Um, yeah, I hadn't thought about the difference between four by six, five by six. I just-
And that's, those are the numbers that he quoted us also, um, in that initial quote from May seventh. That was for a five by six. So if we went with four by six, I'm cer- certain the price would go down. I don't know.
What is the price?
It's a lot.
Um.
The six millimeter single sign is thirty-two thousand.
And is that finished? I mean, or are there gonna be additional costs for a structure base?
No, that's what, that's finished.
That was everything.
Okay, because I know when you, he were here, you were talking about stones and brick and-
That was with um, Rocco Masonry doing the finish work.
And so does it thirty-two thousand complete the whole project? I guess that's my question.
Yes.
With masonry and everything?
Yes.
Yeah, excavation, removal, setting new signs.
Prices already based on, okay.
Which that also um, would come out of our wishlist. Fun.
Well, there is no wishlist fun.
Right, well, sorry, not a fun, but that are-
It would come out of, so that would likely come out of improvement of site's line.
Right.
If that's what you guys wanted.
But coming off of our wishlist, one of the things that we wanted to accomplish with that, that's why we-
It's, yeah, whatever. I just wanted to know how much it costs.
Yep.
So I, I guess, um, I mean, size-wise, I mean, five by six, I don't know, Jack, do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, if, if you guys are fine with five by six, I'm fine with five by six in terms of size. But I, you know, it probably would be a good idea to maybe get like just another quote from another sign company just for um, some comparison.
Okay.
You know, we could probably even uh, mock up a sign, you know, have serviced, put a piece of four by out there or something to see how it-
The size-wise, yeah.
Size-wise. Five by six is, is pretty big. Are you okay with that filling up that corner, you know what I mean?
So like, you know, when I came to the intersection, like, so if you're coming northbound on Ridge or east on three oh three, because it's on a forty-five degree angle, you'll still be able to see it.
Are we talking about one panel or two?
One panel, one panel.
One.
But at a forty-five degree angle to the intersection, right? So-
So you wouldn't see it going northbound?
You, you, you would only catch a glimpse of it, like if you were stopped at the light. You still could see, you'd look over your left shoulder, right? Or, or the other direction, and there would be enough for you to see. Um, and maybe do a quick read. So, you know, to have a little bit larger sign would help with a quick read.
Then I think five by six is probably, because it's gonna be set on an angle.
On an angle. So that way you get, you can at least catch a glimpse of it so that, you know, when you go back to town, you can make sure you time it so you get a red light and you can read the whole sign.
As it scrolls through nine pages.
I, what do they say? You just need to see the first two letters and the last two letters of a word and you can fill in the blanks?
Well, yeah, yeah. But it might still be good just to get an idea what that five by six looks like in that space.
Yeah, I would be, I would definitely be open to that if they had big piece of cardboard or something.
Yeah.
I'm a visual person. Okay. Um, I'll see what I can find out for another company for a quote. I'll Google and see if I can find. See if I can find anything.
That we could just give them the specs of, you know, you could just do it five by six and think that's what it's gonna be.
And I imagine we're looking at the best resolution, the six.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, when you, when I went down, I went past Granger again and I was like, hmm.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's a lovely sign. It's a beautiful sign.
Yeah.
It's just not exactly um, what we are looking for.
Yeah, if it was a little higher resolution.
Okay.
Which they must be talking about, us talking about cost because I did just drive past it and I see that their menu change saying this sign was donated by an anonymous resident.
I, I noticed that today.
People probably, people probably heard us talking about the, the prices.
Right.
Yeah. Um, all right, I wanted to um, discuss with you both also. Um, I've heard a lot of feedback in, just about town in the last couple of months of people that are, you know, really happy that we brought back that communication of the trustees' corner. Um, but I've also had people reaching out saying we need more. What if you do a newsletter, a quarterly newsletter, keeping people up to date with what's going on um, with the township? The thing with that is a quarterly newsletter is so, you know, what I've said about the trustees' corner so many times, it's it's so old by the time it gets printed because half the time it's information that is three weeks old. But people do appreciate it because they are feeling connected. They feel like they are having a better idea of what's going on within the township government. So um, I wanted to talk to you both. Um, you were both copied on the email that I sent to the prosecutor um, regarding the social media and the Facebook. And bringing something like that back, um, having commenting turned off so we're not creating oodles and oodles of public records. It would be a, a way to get quickly factual information out to the residents in a timely manner that is, you know, essentially the same information that's on our website, but it's going to be um, factual information that they don't have to wait a month on to get that information.
And the record retention is, he, he said we would have, have to keep the record of it in and of itself being-
Following our records retention policy.
Okay.
When you do that, could you copy me on those type of communications?
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
I ju, I think it would be, you know, people ask um, a lot of questions um, on social media. And I just, I think that, I've, I've said it so many times, people read the headlines. I think that we have done a great job um, updating the website, making sure that information is out there, but people, people tend to not search for it. They want it presented in front of them.
The only thing that would go in there basically is a reiteration of something that we've already prepared.
Correct.
Wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah, that'd be.
And you're not replying to anything?
No, we're not replying.
Answer questions, I guess that-
Commenting is turned off, so-
But no one employed with the township is responding to
No.
the social media.
Correct.
Because they would not be allowed to comment.
We wouldn't get, we wouldn't get incoming.
Well, that's why you were at saying, ask, people are asking questions. And that's, I guess I'm just trying to clarify what that means.
Sorry, no, it's, it's, what, what I had seen is, it's a source of information because then it can be shared a hundred different times by a hundred different people with as many comments as they want. That is no longer a record that the township has to maintain.
If, if somebody gets it off of their, they can put it on their own and re, resend it.
Right.
Right.
They, it's similar to-
Forwarding an email.
Like a public records request.
I've been through this conversation for the last six years about the same. Um, so I get it. I just would like to see what the prosecutor's uh, comments are to date.
I will forward it to you.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, any mechanisms we use to push out information is beneficial. I mean, trustees' corner, you know, we've been doing those and, you know, we provide a lot of information, but it is, you know, once a month and it's two weeks behind schedule basically. So if we can advance information more quickly, I think that's helpful. That benefits us.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it benefits the community to just be, you know, more in the loop as to what's going on. And if people are more tuned to Facebook than reading Hinckley Record.
Some more timely communication.
Yeah.
Well, and it's also, I, I don't want things coming from me. We're a board. We, we all decide things together. We put things out there together. And like, for example, this last movie night that we had is, I don't want that to be, you know, Monique's movie night. No, it's the Hinckley Township Movie Night. It's something that Hinckley Township is providing for people. Um, the parade, that was not Monique's parade. It was, we all equally had a hand in the parade, and it should be something that is Hinckley Township, not just one person. And, and I think that it's important- And, and I think that it's important to share the information with people because they're our residents, right? It's not just, we're not just going to show them one side of something, or, you know, when things are looking, looking great for us, let's share this information, you know? We just had, um, the appeal for the annexation. I mean, when that decision comes in, whether it's for or against the township, I think that's something that should be shared on there, because people have, have that, that right.
Becomes a public record.
Right.
You see, that's what I'm saying, you guys are really going to have to be very careful, because if you come up with several paragraphs on using that as an example, that becomes a new public record, that isn't something that exists. You are creating content, you are creating a document.
And if I read the reply correctly, that's what the prosecutor's office said, so that you have to retain it in accordance with your.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you guys are going to have to really be careful, you know? I, I don't, I don't care, but we are all, you know, you're going to have to test someone with that. I, I, or you're just going to have to establish a set of guidelines. You know, you, you're going to have to be real clear on it. Example would be that it has to go on the website first. Already a lot of our content on the website becomes a public document. It's creating, all right? Well, then obviously that's the primary source. And if you want to copy something to Facebook, that's fine, you can do that. Facebook then becomes a secondary source, not your primary. But you've got to have to establish really clear guidelines for those individuals who are going to be tasked with posting this information.
Mm-hmm, well, I think just like the trustees' corner where the three of us, you know, come to agreement or provide our own portions of it, and we'd have to do something similar, whether it's for the website or.
But that's a great idea, is we, we could have a scrolling document that's on the website and extract it. So then you have two methods of getting information out of it.
Basically, isn't that what you're saying? You're just providing someone a different, an additional resource?
Right, but that's what I'm saying, then, then you just pull it from there and repost it to Facebook and it, and that becomes a secondary document then.
Yeah, because you already have established the website is your primary source.
Mm-hmm.
But you're not going to, you know, that's what has to be clear. And if you choose to create content on Facebook, then you're going to have to come up with, it's going to have to be adapted.
Yeah.
To our record retention policy, and it'll, someone will be tasked with having to maintain all that.
Mm-hmm. And while through scrolling along, um, I noticed, I don't know if anybody else is aware of this also, that it appears that the township also has a LinkedIn page.
Not that I know of.
There's a LinkedIn page for Hinckley Township, um, and I don't know, I don't know.
Why would I know?
I don't know if it's locked, I don't know if it, I, I don't know, nothing's been posted on it, but there is a.
Delete it, delete it.
Well.
It's just nothing on it.
I can't delete it, I didn't create it.
Who put it on the website, though? Someone had to install it on the website.
Somebody had to gotten an account, that could have been years ago.
It could have been years ago, but I just, I just noticed it today, so.
Now that you mention it, and I didn't, I forgot to talk about it, about advertising on some electronic media for the zoning inspector position, um, I had wanted to bring that up in discussion, you know, some of these recruiting sites like Indeed.com, but LinkedIn also has the availability of posting.
I, I don't know what any of the login information is for LinkedIn.
Okay.
I mean, that would, it would have to be, I, because LinkedIn is a professional site, so it's something where people go to look for employment.
Right.
But I have no control, I mean, I have no control over that. So that would be something, maybe an email to Brian Latko. I, I don't, I don't know, that was.
Well, either Lynn or Suzanne would have had to put it on the website, so one of them should know.
Is it on the website?
Didn't you just say it was on the website?
No, she's, I think.
No, I was, I was just scrolling through and I was on LinkedIn today and I saw that Hinckley has that.
I don't know if that was anything initiated, that could just be a.
Something that I don't.
I don't know, I don't, I mean, it, it had, I clicked on it and it has an administrator, but.
If it's through LinkedIn, then we don't have to worry about it, we're not creating any content.
Okay. I'm just putting it all out there, so that's, I noticed it today.
You good?
Um, well, if we are in agreement, um, do we want to wait until we have like set parameters that Martha's suggesting? I think it's a good idea, or would we like to, um, I can make a motion today, because I believe it was a motion to, um, deactivate the social media.
You know, again.
Oh, I don't know.
I think absent clear parameters, this is why we've gone back and forth with this.
Yeah, let's write a, basically a social media policy, including utilizing that for the township.
Be point on this.
I, I agree, I, I agree.
The ongoing issue. I, I don't care, as long as there are guidelines that conform with our record retention policy and someone is tasked with that, and it's overseen, then I understand.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I think, I think we agree in, you know, there's consensus to do something like that, so. I think just.
I said we'll work out a.
How to get administrated.
A social media policy that spells out what can go on, how it goes on.
I agree, I, very similar to what we are doing with the trustees' corner. I, I completely agree, I think we don't want any, anything rogue happening, we don't want, it's, this is not about having feel-good flowers and rainbow posts, it is about having factual information for the residents. That's, that is the entire purpose of it, I just think it adds another layer of transparency and it's, I've said it so many times, it's just people don't want to look for information, they want it handed to them. So, you know, I think that this is something that if we can reach another fifteen hundred, two thousand residents of, hey, this is what's going on, I think that's important, I think that's impactful. It was, I, I thought that the, I thought that the newsletter was a good idea to keep people informed. I mean, it didn't really have a lot of following, but I thought that that was, it was a way of saying, hey, how can we get more information to you? So I will, I will work on parameters that we can discuss at the next meeting and see where we want to go from there, but thank you both for contemplating.
The Ohio Historical, um, Commission, like that's who does the record retention. They may be a good resource for guidelines and just for that.
Ohio Historical? Okay.
Give you my cheat sheet from my sunshine, I think they're referenced on there.
Have you taken sunshine?
Mm-hmm.
Once or twice?
Three times.
Once or twice in the last two years?
Three times in the last three years.
Okay, moving along. Uh, just for information purposes, the annexation appeal hearing was last Thursday, where the judge has listened to oral arguments from both sides. Uh, no timeline was provided on the decision. And just a footnote about Ra, they're working on getting an estimate on the rest of renovation, rather, of the youth field, uh, ball fields. So once they get that, we'll be able to consider, uh, what our contribution could be to help them relative to the cost involved. Yeah, that is all I have for this evening.
Well, can I bounce back?
Yes.
I did want to talk about, um, doing online advertising for the zoning inspector position, because I really, I think we need to broaden the, um, the arena, the scope. And so I was looking at both Indeed.com and ZipRecruiter.com. Um, I think Indeed kind of caters more to, at a professional level, uh, job searchers. Uh, they're both kind of have the model of you set a budget, so you create an account, you set a budget of how much you want to spend, and basically it's, it's kind of like Facebook in a way. When people, um, submit a resume or pull down, uh, a job description or whatever, you get charged X dollars until your budget meets your budget, and then if you want to increase your budget, you can, or whatever. Um, so I think it would be worthwhile, um, to do that. And, um, you know, we have a couple of resumes in. Um, I would like to consider starting an interview process in a few weeks and perhaps kind of a two-tiered, where the first tier of questions is to kind of make sure the qualifications are there. And then, you know, if you make the second cut, then you come back for a second interview type of thing, so. But I, in the same time, I'd like to see if we can get more resumes going, so.
So you want to advertise this on Indeed before we're talking about scheduling?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, and I don't know if either of yous have any experience with, at, any of these online, um, job things? And I'm looking at you because the rest of us are like retired.
I know the county uses Indeed, so.
The county uses Indeed, okay.
I have a friend that owns a business that used Indeed that I helped her with, so.
Okay.
Helped, did not do, helped.
Right.
So, I mean, I can maybe provide some.
Guidance.
Maybe.
And we probably need to use, um, like credit card, put a credit card in file, so I'm kind of looking at. He left already, so I'll probably need to do.
Got to ask you for an allowance.
Dad, yeah, could I have an allowance?
You have the credit card.
So I'm, you know, like I have no idea like how these things run, but like maybe starting, you know, like a set limit of five hundred dollars for advertising on Indeed, um, does that make sense?
Seems like a lot, actually.
Well, when you consider paper media, hmm, it's probably.
No, I mean, no, I'm, I, it seems like, I don't, I don't know that we would even need that big of a budget, but I mean, if you want to do like a motion not to exceed.
I would do a motion not to exceed, I mean, the thing is like when you set up the account, if you want to stop, you want to stop the ad running, you can freeze it, so you don't have to wait till you expend, you know, five hundred dollars. I just that, I'd rather set it, you know, when we go in and create the count, we could set it at two hundred dollars and see how long it takes to chip away before we increase the, the budget.
Yeah, I would definitely do, because it'll just keep going.
Keep going.
I mean, if you don't see the email and it'll just keep ticking up that ticker, so.
All right, so, um, I'm, like to make a motion to, um, approve the use of Indeed uh, for advertising the zoning inspector position, um, at a cost, at a cost not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Also, um, I just wanted to mention that in the job description posting that's currently out there, the zoning inspector position says it's a forty-hour work week. Uh, would you have any problem if we were to kind of scale that back and say something like a thirty to forty-hour work week? Just curious, um, your thoughts on that?
Well, we're not talking about an hourly position, we're talking about a salaried.
No, it's, it's an hourly position.
Okay.
It is an hourly position, I just.
I thought it was salary.
No, I just, I did those numbers to calculate out what the salary would be for the year, you know, what the earnings would be for the year, but it's an hourly position, because it's like, and I don't remember now, twenty-four to twenty-nine dollars an hour or something like that. I don't, you know.
But we can't, saying thirty to forty, we can't go to forty, we can say, you know, it gives us latitude to make a choice.
Right, because maybe in the beginning, um, you know, uh, uh, until, you know, there's enough time spent, thirty hours, thirty-two hours, thirty-four hours, you know?
Yeah.
Of course, thirty hours in the office plus hours at meetings could add up to forty pretty quickly, so.
Here's my concern with that, is if, we don't want to attract someone that's going to say, oh, thirty hours a week, you know, a big deal, yeah, I can do that.
Mm-hmm.
And we spend the time and the money training them on this, and it turns out being forty hours a week, and they're like, this is too much, this is too much of a commitment. And did we just spend a lot of time on the wrong candidate?
Right.
That's my concern with that, is some people say, I don't want any more than thirty.
Yeah, and, and we want somebody that's committed, you know, has a full-time position, that's willing to, to spend the time, so. But I'm, I'm kind of throwing this out there because just getting feedback of, oh, if it wasn't some, you know, full work week type of thing, so.
I, I, I would be more comfortable, I mean, if that's the direction you're both thinking of, I would be more comfortable if it's thirty-five to forty, like, I just, that's an entire day's worth of work right there to, to go from thirty to forty, it's.
And we can leave it at forty, um, you know?
What do you think?
I did like the flexibility because it gives us, you know, latitude to adjust the schedule as needed, where, you know, maybe once they're up to speed, you don't need, you know, what are you utilizing that person for?
Mm-hmm. So you're thinking almost opposite, they may start out at more hours than this.
Right, and once they're.
And then they can dial that down, so thirty-five to forty compromise? It just kind of shows there's some flexibility in, in the work week.
That's, that's fair.
Okay. All right, then I'll make that adjustment, you all agree to it, all right, that's all. Now I'm really done.
Public. Please.
Mm-hmm.
Name and address.
Hayden Delarque, two zero four one West one hundred and thirtieth.
Welcome home.
Welcome back home, yes ma'am, yes sir. Uh, the construction that they're doing for that development, he has had a six-cylinder diesel pump running for the last, since Thursday, non-stop. He turns it off during the day sometimes, but all night, and it's literally a hundred and fifty feet from my bedroom, so I don't get too much sleep. So we have, I, I know we don't have a noise ordinance, and I was wondering if we could figure out how to put a noise ordinance on the books, so we could stop this.
Um, have you had a chance to speak with the developer?
He is never there when I'm there, today would have been a good day, but I had to be at my hands to.
Hmm, so are you, are you north or south? You're south of it, right?
No, I'm right next to it.
I mean, your home is south of the development.
Yes, raining that lake.
You're right in the front there.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think Darlene?
Mm-hmm, that's my wife.
Your wife, she called here. Um, did somebody get back with her to give her the number that she can reach the developer with?
No.
Talked with him?
No.
Hmm, okay.
I think if I can, I, I may have it myself of his number, but he is not a pleasant man to talk to.
I understand, but.
At all.
I, I think he might be receptive, given the situation he's had to deal with across the street and the recent flooding, the county engineer was out there this past week. So I would suggest you try, if you can.
Okay.
Um, but trying to do a noise ordinance, you know, having been on zoning commission, uh, noise ordinances are very, uh, pesky and difficult things to do, because how do you measure noise, say it's a nuisance?
Mm-hmm, you have a six-cylinder diesel engine sitting right next to you.
Yeah, well.
Since Thursday, that's, that's getting a little out of hand.
And there's been a lot of water there since Wednesday, so.
Hey, he's draining the lake.
And he's, you know, is he draining the whole lake?
He's draining that lake down severely, it's like, hmm, over half gone now.
Mm-hmm, so that means eventually that motor's going to be turned off, right?
Probably about another three weeks, with the rain that's coming in, probably about another three weeks, so I ain't going to listen to it for another three weeks.
Well, um, I mean, you have the option of contacting him, which, you know.
He did encourage.
I do.
He did encourage in that email.
He did encourage that, you know, um, the other. He did encourage that, you know, the other situation across the street to exchange information, numbers and contacts, so. And there is, as you heard me say, he'll be coming up in front of Medina County Planning Commission in July for their final site review. And then in front of zoning commission here. Although the meeting will have to be set because July 4th, when they would normally meet is July 4th. So this Thursday, they'll probably come up with a date for when zoning commission will meet in July. I would certainly hope by then, the noise has, you know, abated.
Yeah.
But I would try to, you know, do your best effort in.
Yeah, I already had a little bit of conference with him already, confrontation with him. He had started digging holes all on my property, and I'm like, you do know that's my property. He said, no, it ain't. Yes, it is. It's 25 feet past this fence. And then a couple of days later, then he went and looked and seen the property lines, and he's like, okay, fine. And covered the holes up and then moved all the trees that he was going to plant and covered all the holes that he dug in on my property all up.
Well, see, so you were successful.
That time.
Yes, well, but it's important. I mean, you've established a pattern. So he does say that he's on site the days he's in town. He was out of town last week. And so he, you know, did not get all the feedback until like Friday about all the water that had taken place.
Yeah, you see the pictures of the.
I went out there. I went out there, although it was already at the end of the day. And like you, the sun was out and you would think nothing happened. I mean, you know, I mean, except for.
We were sent videos. We were sent videos of.
Seeing, seeing the road and, and I did see the generator and hear it up there, so.
Yeah, like it's, it's pretty loud and annoying.
I'll take it. I'll, I'll try and give him a call and see if I can at least get him to run it during the day.
Yeah, because, because like today and yesterday, it didn't run during the day. Well, I said they were working on it. They had it off. And when I got home, it was off. Half hour later, it was on and then up all night.
You may have a nuisance violation, either through the police or, I mean, you can't, you can't.
Yeah, like I said, that thing runs 24/7. Yeah, like today you had it off for a little while.
I'll talk to him first, so I'll see, you know, see if we can work something out for you. Okay? All right.
That's it. Glad to be back home.
Welcome home. Thanks for coming.
Good evening.
Hello, Natasha Haley's 1809 Ridge Road. Just wanted to come up and chat about the comprehensive plan. I know next year we're coming up on 10 years of the comprehensive guideline being updated. And I was just wondering what the status is and thought processes on updating? Because the last time we did this, it was a very lengthy process that took, you know, started at the beginning of the prior, or the end of the prior year and went all the way through, you know, the year that we actually executed the documents. So I'm just wondering, you know, when are we getting the party started?
Good question.
Well, that's a good question for the newest trustee, you know, and I haven't yet, I mean, I'm aware of that. And it doesn't exactly have to be on a 10-year discrete time schedule. But that is something that will be begun, but I have not started anything in that regard, so.
We'll be putting out an RFQ to, you know, find somebody to manage that portion of it and move forward from there. But yes, it's not a fast process.
Well, one thing that I just wanted to make a comment of, the 2015, when you read the document, the beginning document talks about the process. And I have to say that it sounds like the process at that time really involved the community. There was a lot of meetings. There was a committee. There was a lot of engagement. There was a website and communication and a lot of engagement with the community of finding out what was most important to them, incorporating their ideas, coming up with so much, you know, support from the community and ideas and a lot of engagement. And I would hope that, you know, this board would consider continuing in that same spirit of being very community-oriented and engaging us. Because I know there's a lot of people that would like to participate and have their voices heard. And, you know, Facebook is a great platform, but it does nothing. You know, zoning is really everything. The comprehensive guide is really, you know, all roads lead to zoning, really. So that's the way, that's the kind of the document that we should be looking at as guiding some of these decisions that relate to future development and future conservation and future protection of our, of our townships. I think that it'd be really important to, you know, keep us all involved and would be, you know, here, of course, bugging you guys to get it done.
Thank you.
I agree. And lucky for us, we have a great mentor sitting up here who is on the 2015 plan. To guide us. She can guide us to create our new guide.
While she's, while she's cutting grass in the woods.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move to adjourn at 8:06 PM.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.